This conference will now be recorded.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, in the great physicality of justice for all.
Welcome everyone. We'll officially call a meeting to order. First item on the agenda would be to approve the agenda. Is there any changes Bruce?
Mr. Chairman, with your permission, at eight thirty, Marilla Capson and folks in the city of Spearfish were originally planned to come to talk to you about the UTEJ joint jurisdiction ordinance. They have a scheduling conflict, so they would like to start as soon as John Bay ends and before Amber, and Amber's aware of that. It's probably deftly a nice thing to continue discussion of Spearfish Plats as well. One thing to add perhaps under John Bay's time is you received a letter, a follow-up letter from the Secretary of Transportation and also the consulting group that you had your meeting with regarding the visitor center, and they were wondering about if you had any additional comments. And then the final thing is I think John Bay may talk about updated numbers regarding the Folsom to be continuation from last time.
Motion by any agenda?
Yeah, I'll second that. But I was gonna say, do those people still want to approach approaches from John there when they haven't got a gravel permit yet?
He's got, yeah, he's got that pending today, so I assume that will come up.
Oh, I thought maybe they want to wait until they have it, so they may have to gravel.
See, that's a fair discussion.
Any further discussion on the agenda? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion will say aye. Opposed, motion carried. Any conflicts today?
Yeah, I do have a couple. Just to be clear, I was approached by the backends on their rezone on procedure only, so that's not a conflict. Letting you know. And I do have a conflict with item three, CMV Ventures, and item four, Deer Mountain Club, which I'd also include item five, Deer Mountain Club.
Mr. Chairman, Brady, do you also potentially have a conflict with this plat if that could be?
Yeah, there's a couple of maybe Spearfish plat, but I'll just bring those up if they come to us.
Or the gangler plat as well.
The gangler. Yep, thank you.
We're down to approval of the meeting minutes, April twenty fifth, as well as the board of equalization.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question for the auditor of the minutes. Did we show that Thai vote? Did you put that in? I've been traveling. It didn't read the latest and greatest. The Thai vote on the gangler plat? Oh, I mean, it is three. Okay, very short. Okay, thank you very much. Move to approve the best minutes in the county.
We have a motion and a second to approve the best minutes in the state. All those in favor of the motion will say aye. Opposed?
That was both sets in the motion, by the way. It's your second for both sets.
Put your pleasure on the bills. I have my questions satisfied.
Mr. Chairman, if I may. Mr. Alka, on the court-appointed attorneys at the twenty thousand, this is like our second or third month in a row. We've been at that amount. Are we still playing catch-up with COVID or what's going on?
I'm not sure. I think it could be a number fact. Some attorneys wait a period of time before they send in their vouchers and set a bunch in at one time. I don't know any particular circumstances that's involved.
Page eight, Roden Bridge, Bill sixteen seventy-one, Butler Machine.
I think we treated one in and bought one.
Oh, but that was budgeted.
Twenty twenty?
Yeah, it was from last year. And then sixteen eighty-three, DMC Wareparts LLC for sixty-seven hundred. We haven't seen that company before.
We bought cutting edges, but I don't know. I don't remember.
Oh, what's the name of that company?
DMC Wareparts LLC.
Out of Minneapolis, I guess.
Haven't had a vendor, that vendor before. Oh, that might be. We used to get them from Tunor, didn't we? And then seventeen sixty, the two DOT ones, are those bridges, twenty-one thousand and fifty-eight thousand? Six, seventeen sixty, page nine.
Different projects?
Ones for twenty-one thousand, six seventeen, ones for fifty-eight thousand.
So one looks like it's from cost share, share of costs on the home mount east of White Wood on the I ninety service road or White Wood Creek. And the other one is Saint Orange, two point six miles south of Saint Orange.
So those are periodical payments or what are they? We should not pay them till they're?
Since it has a mount due, the DOT for share of costs.
It is corporate.
Yeah. I don't know, they're progress payments or?
Thank you. That's all I have.
Any other questions?
Let's pay the bills.
Got a motion and a second to pay the bills. All those in favor of the motion will say aye. Opposed? Motion carried. All right, travel requests. Let's see, we have a couple?
Three. Start with the public defender's office. This is a travel request for Adam Bryston and Amber Rishi to attend the state bar convention in Sioux Falls from June twentieth through the twenty-third.
Do we typically cover these costs? Is this? Do we have a pattern of doing this?
If you have any questions, Amber, as well.
It shows that the line item in their budget, travel, training, most of these, a lot of the equalization, the other ones are required to keep their jobs. Most times the attorneys will be the bar.
And just so that you know, we don't encourage to go to the bar convention because most of the time I find that there's not a lot that is appropriate for our office. However, they're bringing in an amazing speaker that is somebody that I've wanted to go see or have other attorneys go see in the past at national conferences, and this is a very cheap way for us to be able to have access to that particular person. So normally we don't bother to attend unless there's a required course that we need to do, or it's in Rapid potentially. But this one, Mr. Conkers, I mean, he's one of the best in the country, almost like, so. And yeah, we do have travel and training in our budget. I believe it's at nine thousand dollars.
Which I was gonna be my question, really expensive trip, not all in all.
Yes.
But you had a bold budget before.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I'll second any further discussion. Seeing none, all in favor of the motion will say aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
I'm opposed.
With that, go ahead, Brendan.
The next one is for equalization. I have two for equalization. The first one is to approve the travel request from Brett Ronge, Carmen Simmons, and Louise Han to attend the South Dakota Association of Assessors Conference in Sioux Falls from June thirteenth through the sixteenth and to allow for a travel advance.
I understand this one is required, correct, for certification?
Yeah, we have to do three in five years, so.
Move to approve as presented.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of the motion will say aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
And the second one is for Christine Mackey and Phil Patterson to attend the basic assessor school in Peter from October first through October sixth, and also to request the meals to be paid.
Mr. Chairman, this one is required for new people, I believe. It's basics.
Yeah, it's basics.
I would move to approve as presented.
Second, we have a motion and a second for approval. All those in favor of the motion will say aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
Oh, I have the travel question.
Personnel.
I have a new step raise and classification change for Adam Bryston and also a spelt on allowance. Go to a public defender chief deputy, six, base pay of three thousand seventy point ninety-eight per pay period effective five nine twenty twenty-three.
Move to approve as presented.
Okay, I'll second it. Any further discussion?
So this is budgeted at this rate, is that correct?
Yes, yes.
Okay, seeing no further discussion, all those in favor of the motion will say aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Then I have a new hire. Christian Schroder in the auditor's office. This is to replace Robin who last day was last week, had a county employee one, grade one, base pay of nineteen sixty-nine. She'll be a full-time permanent employee effective on five twenty-two of twenty twenty-three.
Motion second for approval. All those in favor of the motion will say aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
Next, I have a new hire in the treasurer's office. Her name is Amanda Britt, county employee one, grade one, base pay of nineteen sixty-nine. She'll be a permanent full-time employee effective on five ten of twenty twenty-three.
Move to approve as presented.
We have a motion and a second for approval. All those in favor of the motion will say aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
The next one is a new hire, Kelsey Colbrue, correction officer one, grade one, base pay of twenty-one twenty-three. She will be a part-time fill-in employee effective five nine of twenty twenty-three.
I move to approve.
Second, further discussion? Okay, all those in favor of the motion will say aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve. Nerinda Dove is a new hire, and Jennifer West is a new hire in the sheriff's office.
Second, okay, a motion and a second.
I have one question. Why did you start out? New hire and second step raises.
Grade two, is that West?
Yes. Jennifer West.
She has previous experience in this.
Okay, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion will say aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve the two step raises in the sheriff's department for Travis Love and Brandon Rosen.
Okay, I'll second the motion. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion will say aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
Chairman, that's all.
Auditor's account with the treasurer. You're up again, Brendan.
Not on purpose. It's unforgiving. Hundred deposits in the bank are eighty-two million, twenty-nine thousand, four hundred and sixty-four dollars and eleven cents. Put it in that total, or five millions in colier. Bank balance, thirty-nine million, four hundred and ninety thousand, seven hundred and twenty-seven dollars and fifty-three cents. Our US bank, which is our construction fund balance, thirty-five million, eight hundred and forty-two thousand, six hundred and ninety-eight dollars and thirty-one cents. Money market, one million, six hundred and ninety-six dollars and thirty, thirty-eight dollars and twenty-seven cents. Total amount of cash is one thousand three hundred and fifty. Total amount of checks in the treasurer's possession is one million, six hundred and five thousand, fifty-five dollars and sixty-eight cents. Cash, nineteen thousand, six twenty-four eighteen. Petty cash, two thousand, six hundred and sixty dollars for a total of eighty-two million, six hundred and fifty-eight thousand, one hundred and fifty-three dollars and ninety-seven cents.
We approve the auditor's account with the treasurer. Second, okay, a motion and a second for approval of the auditor's account with the treasurer. All those in favor of the motion will say aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Substitute appointment to meet Lawrence County Housing Board.
Mr. Chairman, I think that Commissioner Dybert is appointed, and I believe that I would defer him when he requests him to be here.
Please.
I've said about four years past, and if you're willing to do it, unless someone else wants to. I think my name had been associated with what I was.
Okay, do we need to vote on that?
Yes.
Okay, please. We need a motion. I'll move with approval. Sorry, okay, we have a motion and a second to replace Commissioner Dybert with Commissioner Flannigan. All those in favor of the motion will say aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Election services agreement.
This is a three-year contract with election system and software. It expired, well, just expiring now, so we need to renew it, and it basically locks in our fees for a three-year period when like ballot layout and ballot printing, cost of our ballots and et cetera. And we entered into one in twenty seventeen, and then we re-upped it in May of twenty twenty, and so now this is the third year, and so the prices have not increased since twenty seventeen, and so there is a little bit of an increase in the prices for the next three years, so.
Question, Mr. Chairman? Brenda, if, can we get out of this if we don't use it?
Yes, I think it says in there, you have to give out.
Somebody knows, so much knows. Move to authorize the chairman to sign the agreement.
Motion and a second for approval of chairman's signature. All those in favor of the motion will say aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
This joint powers is going to be after John's spot, Bruce. Is that the one that we're moving?
No, you can handle that now. There's an email you received from Mark and Amber. It's a follow-up on the creation of Senate Bill twenty-one of the money available, I think, for a plan. I would defer to Senator Dybert, Commissioner Dybert, who knows a lot more about it.
Mr. Chairman, if I may. This is just executing the five hundred thousand dollar grant program for counties on the forest plan revision through the Department of Agriculture and Natural Resources. Black Hills Council, local governments in the counties that are involved in the plan allows it to apply for dollar-for-dollar match funds.
All of the Black Hills counties are listed in signatures on it, so everybody's participating.
Second. A motion and a second. All those in favor of the motion will say aye. Opposed? Motion carried. I think we're up to the sheriff's spot. I have nothing. Oh, come on.
Well, I don't know.
Oh, board members? Questions for our acting sheriff there today?
Would you put the RCS report from last week in there, the update on the building?
I will update you on the cars. Since we didn't get any last year, we're getting eight this year, so we're starting to trickle in, so.
I see you must have got one already, huh?
Yeah, we got two sitting down this week, so we're getting that. I'm loading up, but I'll be nice.
All right, thank you, thanks. Okay, we'll take a five-minute break, Brenda.
I'm sorry. 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 I'm sorry.
Do we need to wait till eight twenty-five?
All right, we're gonna wait till eight twenty-five, unless we'll be, this is a public hearing, so if anyone in the body of the audience wants to speak for or against any of the items on the list, I would ask you to please stand, state your name and address for the record. And once public discussion's over, we will close the hearing and offer to the board. As soon as the mouse's tail's on the five, we'll start.
I was gonna ask the sheriff's department if they had any concerns.
We got a letter. We got a letter from Pat, and there is no, there has been no complaints.
No complaints.
He bolted, he bolted, eh?
Now, that is one of our checklist processes when we do these, is to check with the sheriff's office.
Oh, good. Is that cloud correct with the official plan?
It's eight twenty-three by the computer.
All right, well, wait, yeah.
My identity is natural resources committee.
That's terrible.
I don't know why you have to go to outside.
Well, my trip to Sacramento, I went from Rapid to Minneapolis to Seattle to Sacramento. And on the way back, it was Sacramento to Salt Lake to Minneapolis.
Did I have a good time?
Yeah.
Good time in California? Was it nice, huh?
Oh, it was rainy and shitty the whole time.
You're ready back with me?
They canceled my flight eight hours ahead of a thunderstorm because of thunder. I thought, how do you cancel a flight because of weather eight hours ahead of?
Same ones that closed the interstate. We had severe crosswinds in Salt Lake, dusk, just at dusk, you know, when it, like, off the mountains. Seventeen stack.
This is the time and place for public hearing for the license, liquor license renewals. Brenda, do we need to read them into the record?
Nope, nope, I provided a list to commissioners also for the public to view. And this is an annual, this is for the malt beverage licenses, and they run from July first to June thirtieth. I did check with the sheriff's office, or Crystal checked with the sheriff's office, and there has been no alcohol touch violations in the past for any of these businesses on this list. And so we just need approval so we can.
Okay, it is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the body of the audience who would like to speak for or against this license renewals? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and advocate for that consideration. Is there a maximum number? There is.
Unlimited.
On this, anyway.
Anybody can apply, as long as they, as long as they meet the criteria.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for approval. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion will say aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
Chairman, would you like to sign these on the hour or do you wait till? They all have to be signed.
Wait till the next break.
Okay.
All right. John Bay, old buddy, come on up. Bruce, I had a bit more to laugh at. I had a bit more to laugh at. You've got a lot to cover. You, I guess you just take off and go where you want to go, and we'll follow.
Well, got some approach permits on the agenda here. The first one is up of the Home State Road. It is for GF Development, and it's been, the applicant is North Star Construction, and it is for a approach into a proposed gravel quarry. And the site distance is, is good to the west. It's, it's good enough to the, to the east. It meets all the requirements. I would recommend the the proposed approach, but only in the condition that the CUP is granted for the quarry. If this quarry isn't open, then I would rather not have this.
Mr. Dybert?
I would move to continue this to follow the public hearing on the CUP.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to continue this request until after we find out whether the CUPs are granted. Did I have a second?
I did.
Okay, motion and second. All those in favor of the motion will say aye. Opposed? Motion carried. I assume that the other one will be probably similar.
Actually, the other one's a little different. It is also for a proposed gravel quarry. But, but with this one, this is for the Larson Family LLP approach, and the applicant has indicated that with or without the gravel pit, they still want to improve this existing field approach.
Yeah, it's been there a long time.
And it's also, it's not a very good approach. It's, it's not bad, but it's at a, it's at a skew to the road. I would recommend that we do allow them to improve this approach to make it perpendicular to the, to the Homestead Road. So I want to go through with this one, whether they get the, the gravel pit or not.
This is for.
Yes, there's really not a need for a culvert there, the drainage kinda goes to the field anyway, so, but they have indicated they would put a cattle guard in there in lieu of a culvert.
How wide is the cattle guard?
Well, I, I would assume that would depend on if they get, get the CUP for a gravel pit, because then it'll, it'll be a much wider approach.
I might pull in there with my truck to get that.
Will this be straight across from the opposing approach?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, I'll move, uh, follow a recommendation. Okay?
Second.
Motion second to follow the head of superintendent's. All those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
And the third approach permit is for Matt Hoffman, this is up the Global Song Road, and this is the section of road that we were talking about improving. The owner would like, he would like to put in approach irregardless of, of the pending improvement of the road or not, so I would recommend this approach be approved. It's got site distance for miles, it's in a decent enough spot. Okay? And as far as the matter of the improving of the road, I met with the landlord, I believe he's here today as well, if he wants to speak up, we, we, uh, as your guys' request, we went out, we, we marked the location for the approach. We remeasured the length of the road as far as he's willing to go at three tenths of a mile, and the width of the road, we've narrowed it up quite a bit, and I think that you guys have a, a estimate, the new estimate, and the landlord has indicated he will participate in, in the improvement, he's willing to pay for the gravel, and, uh, there are some trees to be removed, and he's willing to, uh, to help with the tree removal.
Mr. Driver.
Back to the approach, is it positioned that it can not only serve the seven acres, but the remaining thirty-three?
Correct, and he has also indicated that if he does do a second approach, or he's only applying for one approach, it can service both pieces.
Because the thirty-three acres has no building rights.
That's right. The statute implies that the owner would have to submit a petition to the county, I guess, unless this is being done if the county's passed, then we'd probably avoid the petition, but again, the statute talks about petitions submitting. For the improvement.
Yes, yes. Okay, well, should we deal with the approach first?
I'd like to do them in reverse order. But it's up to you. I'd like to have the discussion on the road.
Okay.
First.
I think she's stated everything on the road, John, let's, let's, uh, board's discussion, almost, go ahead, right?
Mr. Actor, what do we need to do, if anything, on this road?
Well, in terms of the actual work.
Actions.
Well, so, I think the statute implies that a petition needs to be submitted, and that the work would be done by the county or by a county contractor.
Then you just have like an MOU that would say that he's gonna pay for gravel.
Yeah, something like that, I suppose, yeah, and we've never done it before, so I have no model.
Have we done same kind of thing with Meg Watergo? Be similar.
I don't know that we ever had any signed agreements that I recall, I think it was just sort of a handshake.
Well, we just did some agreements on section lines, but those were not on the system, is that the distinction here?
They're very similar, probably would be a working model.
So what I just heard is we're not ready to do anything on the road today, because we don't have agreement in front of us, we just have a cost estimate discussion.
So again, the other statute presupposes that a petition, I guess, unless you're gonna do it on your own, you could always, I suppose, do it add to your, you know, on your own. We, we probably want to be mindful of updating the, the highway map as well, it's submitted to the DOT to reflect the issue of that portion of the road.
If we are to take it out. What, but it's already on the system.
Well, that's, that's true, I guess, right, it is, it's just that, that's been approved. And I, and I shared that too, I think planning and zoning is looking to talk to Mr. Hoffman as well about another matter going on on this road, too. I don't think they've been able to reach, have any contact with him. Well, I can't. Back to the road being on the system, it's on the system, but it's on the system as unimproved and dirt or other surface. It's not listed as pavement or gravel.
So it's more minimum maintenance.
That's how the state has it listed. And also, one more point on that road, there is a, the culvert, the first culvert that is at the end where we take, where we turn around, there is a culvert that is exposed. Whether we do anything or not, I still think we need to go out there and, and fix that culvert, cover it so that he can do the work if you, uh, if you approve his approach. I, I don't think we should just start allowing equipment up and down that road for this work without us at least covering that culvert up with existing material on site, just to do the work.
And if we do not agree to the road improvement, will the applicant still submit the approach for that?
Getting a, planning and zoning is investigating a matter out there of a campground being run as well. I think a couple of years ago, there was a similar incident, and so there was a complaint that was made last week. I don't know a whole lot of detail, but that's under investigation as well.
John Hoffman?
Sure.
Well, there's friends standing there.
Just stand up, state your name and address and.
Matt Hoffman. Living eleven four ninety, Focus on Railroad. Yeah, it's just an existing, I don't know, got some friends standing there, so it's not a campground at all, it never has been, ever will be. So that's, I guess, we just need to clarify that, but we just got some friends standing there.
And I don't really want to get into it a whole lot, but I think, uh, Mr. Hoffman's information that the complaint stated that there was a, an unlicensed drain field out there, and that was concerned from the, from the complaining party of pollution to false water creek. I can't verify any of that, but I believe that that's the nature of the complaint, I, I make.
Okay.
Those are just allegations.
Mr. Chairman, should we can. It looks like we should deal with the approach, uh, today, and, uh, wait until a petition is officially filed for the actual road work. This is how I would propose we go from here. So if you'd like to deal with the approach. Commissioner Pla, what was your recommendation?
I recommend we approve the approach, most of the fellow recommendations.
Second, but I have a question.
Okay, go ahead.
The completion date is only a month, which is six one, we're halfway into that. So you have effectively twenty days to complete?
I believe he's already got the material on site.
Okay.
And I think he's already has called it on site, so.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion before us will say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, you got your approach for here.
Would it be okay if I go out and fix this culvert as far as covering it, so that we don't do any more damage?
I would certainly, okay, we have favor of that.
Question, you, you use that cut across occasionally?
We have, it's been several years, but yes, anytime we do work on that road, or we have to go from one end to the other, we use the improvements. I'm just saying that we should improve that hundred-foot section, so we don't damage that pipe that have to replace it if we do improve.
So on the remainder of this request, Bruce, by, by virtue right, Mr. Hoffman needs to do the official petition to go forward here.
I think that's the appropriate way to officially get your consideration, but she'll have to.
Does that board agree? If you need to follow the, you know, forward. You understand that, Matt?
So I, I would, attention.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, so do I have choices of how we do it? John, I guess, talked about what we. This, I guess, I think we want to have, uh, very, be very clear about the extent to which the road's gonna be approved, how it was gonna be approved, the cost that's gonna be incurred, and we probably want an agreement that that payment be made. Make sure.
Okay, Mr. Driver.
I'm in a position, there would be no cost to the county, is where I'm at.
Mr. Sleep. I'm thinking that the more improvement on the road, the more traffic there it's gonna be, and gonna have more problems with things, so, very, they won't be as they have. Okay, well, it looks like that you're, it's up to you to, uh, your petition.
Alright.
Alright, okay, John, what else you got for us?
Um, we have this, the one oh eight vacation, there, I think we have something here to talk about that, and he wants to, uh, seriously, he wants to vacate a section line road that has a, a county structure on it, it's in the state inventory, it's inspected every two years. It was also rebuilt in two thousand and eight at the cost of a hundred and ten thousand nine hundred and ninety-six dollars, and at the same time, or at twenty nineteen, when we had to redo the, the Dorset Bridge, we used the one oh eight as a bypass, so we re-gravelled that road, so at the cost of sixteen thousand sixty dollars, uh, and then as you, like, the bridge, uh, this last inspection in twenty-two, it, it has no faults, and, uh, you can see the tonnage, it's rated for twenty-nine tons single load and forty-nine tons combination.
Okay? Uh, Mr. Cap, you want to add anything further?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Cap, six oh nine Nellie Lane in Spearfish, ordered by average record. Um, yes, we are desiring to vacate, uh, about a quarter-mile section of one oh eight, which dead ends into Butte County, um, which dead ends into a bluff at the end of one oh eight. Um, the entire road is about a half a mile long, with Butte and Orange County portions over at the bridge that Mr. Bay spoke of. The reason we want to do this is a couple of things, the neighbors that live down there and myself have collected beer bottles and needles and some of the things that aren't as desirable as I'd like at the end of this very dark dead-end road, um, it goes nowhere. Um, able to make that a private road, um, up front would allow us to basically gate it off at Creekside Loop up there at the end of one oh eight. Taking the bridge off of your inventory would alleviate Lawrence County's responsibility for any sort of future maintenance, um, inspection, anything like that. Um, it is a minimum maintenance road, is that correct? Is that what they, I don't know what the exact term is.
The, the, the road, the, the sign at the end of the road, and I don't know why this is even on there, but it says "bridge closed to local traffic", and in the, in the, uh, bridge inspection, it, there is no, there's, there's nothing saying that it's supposed to be there, I, I honestly don't know why it's there. I think it was there from before, when the bridge was, was closed, or was before it was rebuilt, and it's never been removed. So, so other than that, I mean, it's not technically a minimum, or no maintenance, or county maintenance ends, it's not really designated as any event.
Sure.
It's a section line road.
And the bypass, when you did the other bridge, they used it, it was, it was intended to use as the bypass, and I think three people used it, because you have to cross four private pieces of property, um, to get from section line to section line, so it's not a true bypass in the sense that it's not open to the public, because at the end of one oh eight, you can't turn left or right, you immediately enter private property, Lorraine Kissick's on both sides. So, yeah, so our desire is to, um, apply to vacate that section line, I've spoken to Butte County as well, um, they also have a similar process to Lawrence County. Um, they don't recognize their section at all, like, of any kind of road, it's not on their map, it's not anything. Um, and it has been recently designated by Butte County from the bridge going north as Shortgrass Lane. Um, so Butte County section is no longer recognized, um, they could, but Butte County as well.
So, other than yourself, is Lorraine Kissick the only landlord affected, or is?
Um, two, there, Donnie Kissick, Lorraine's brother owns a section between Lorraine Kissick and myself, um, and I've spoken to Donnie about the private road that we cut in. We haven't spoken to him about the vacation process yet, mostly want to appreciate the opportunities to bring it to your guys' attention before we go through the surveying and all the, you know, expense of officially applying to vacate, kind of wanted to get a temperature read on what you guys' feeling was on it. Um, and then Ed Stump, 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 uh, Ed owns a piece of land as you enter that as well, and he owns front of the road on Creekside Loop as well, so. Commissioner Driver.
So, what I'm seeing is you want to vacate it from Creekside Loop to the river, which is the county line. And, uh, and then the piece from the county line north, Butte County, would be vacated through the Butte County process.
Correct, sir.
And if we vacated our fir-, ours first, there would be a piece of county road that would be isolated.
Yeah, it is my intention to vacate the counties first, um, they have, I've talked to the road superintendent as well as county commissioner in Butte County. Um, the process is a little less stringent than Lawrence County's, but still straightforward, apply for it, public hearing, in the newspaper for a week, second hearing, and then you go. So, um, talking to their road superintendent, again, who does not recognize it at all, um, when we laid it in our new road, I asked if he brings some gravel, I tuned it up, and he said, no. I said, alright, a guy had to try. Um, so, um, it dead ends into that giant bluff, um, the likelihood and the practicality of that road ever continuing to anywhere is, you know, I mean, that's, nothing on that.
My observation is the process will be the same and statutory, but that's a legal question. And I think it, it leaves the section line and goes to the west of it, if you're a small motion there, so it would be, you might have to vacate the section line and the, uh, prescriptive use of the road, but my question is, will Butte County then vacate it to the center of the bridge?
I don't believe you.
That's the county line.
You know, I'm not sure of the details of that, I'm understanding that Lawrence County owns the bridge, I don't, I don't know the details of when it was repaired in two thousand and eight, who paid for that?
We did.
Okay, so it's my assumption that they would vacate from the bridge, from the north side of the bridge, on.
They'd probably have to do it to the county line, which is the center of the road.
Yeah, they chose not to help us get repair it back in the day, because I was on the board then as well.
Mr. Chairman, I would recommend, if you're so inclined, uh, it would be a two-step process, not only to get to the section line, but also to vacate the road as well.
Yeah, okay, they can be simultaneous.
Did we decide if this is within the extraterritorial jurisdiction, the city's gonna have to be on board with this as well?
Could be, and cities here, this is probably the first time they're hearing about it.
It is.
So I'm sure it's on the map.
I know it might be close, I could reach out.
If so, you go there first.
I think if we remembered that it was up on one side of that section line, the city. It's very close, yes, it might be the border, I think that's right. Like, right, right on the border, maybe.
Okay, where do you want to go from here, gentlemen?
Well, I would, you know, I would suggest Butte County would weigh in first, because that would affect our decision.
Would that be something I could bring, if I go through the process of vacating the Butte County side, and then bring that documentation back to?
The city, city slash county.
City slash commission, and then, so then we can have.
I think that'd make it cleaner when it, legal counts.
I, I agree, and one other issue that I haven't quite reconciled yet is, what about the bridge? Because once it's off the county system, we're not gonna be inspecting it any longer, and, and so, so what happens to that? I, I, John found a statute that I think the county can remove improvements.
Thirty-one, three dash ten.
If we want to remove a bridge or not, but again, I, it's an unanswered question in my mind about the ongoing liability of that bridge, even though it's off the county system.
Would it be my desire not to remove the bridge? Just saying those words out loud.
In my experience, there's been some done where the, I don't know how the documents were, but the bridge was transferred to the private entities, entity or entities, so. But we'd, we'd want to make sure that's wrapped up, uh, my question would, do we have any outstanding grants on this, if we become honest?
It was not, we did not use any, any grant money for this, so, okay, that would, that would negate the whole thing if it was, we looked and looked, and there was no grant money.
And then our follow-up would be, we'd take the structure and the road off the territorial state.
Go through that process.
Okay.
Okay, so, Cap needs to go to Butte County and go to war with them, and then come back, is that what I'm hearing?
Can I talk to the city too?
Yes, sir.
Please.
Do we need to do anything formal here, Bruce?
No.
Alright, thank you, Mark, you're a good buddy.
Awesome.
Hey, John?
Uh, the DOT, the state DOT would like to temporarily lower the speed limit from fifty-five to forty-five on the Saint Andro for the work on the bridge project, we have a, their concern is that where their work zone is in the, in the curves, everybody's, it goes from the city limits where it's forty-five. city limits where it's forty-five, it goes to fifty-five, then it goes right into a curve into their work zone where it instantly goes to thirty-five. They're requesting that we would lower that to forty-five. It's already been lowered on the north side just because of the work zone and the city limits of Saint Andro, so the request would be to, for safety of the Republican workers to lower that, and I would also recommend that as well.
Okay.
This be temporary?
Yes, it would just be for the duration of the summer till the bridges are built, which they're coming along good.
So moved. Alright. Okay, motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
And I guess, last thing I have is for the, the bike race.
We still have the plats as well. Also, it's bike race, so you have, uh, in front of you, you determine by name, uh, John talked to the event organizer, I think it's Mr. Jewett of the Pine Island and the quarter five home bike races, I think they've been going on for some time without incident, talked to sheriff's office, but they called and talked to John and we have, had other folks sign agreements in the past, they've executed those agreements, provided people liability insurance.
Okay.
So I have, would you be looking for a motion to authorize it with all those events?
Here.
I, I, I approve it.
Yep. Commissioner Diamond.
Where's the end at the start?
There, actually, there, the, the Pine Island race, it's got several starts and several ends. The map you have is this one, there's like five different courses there, anywhere from forty miles to two hundred and some miles.
Are they, are they even gonna put out signage and have flaggers?
They always have in the past, you know, until you brought up the bike race here at the last meeting, I didn't know we had any kind of permitting system for this, nor do these. And I guess, this is their eleventh annual, with their first annual permits.
Well, I was just curious because, uh, they had bikes running stop signs with no, no flaggers, just people out there in camel.
Right. That was, yeah, the last, right? So, as far as their traffic control, I know that they've always had a sign board and stuff out in the past and I've never went bowling to their course to see what kind of signage they had.
I was mainly thinking of county roads.
Commissioner, I think this Pine Island reminded me of the first time we've seen this, and five old they've done several times. They usually coordinate with sheriff's department, sometimes the city and then you guys, since I think we have put out our big board that says caution.
We have.
I don't know if it was to that reason.
I think it was the five old, but, because it doesn't have till September, I wouldn't put that behind it. Another one I haven't seen before, that's the other one, but I would, what, do you have a recommendation on these?
I have no problem with this bike race, so I have either one of them.
Either one of them.
So if this is on a weekend and you have to put signage out, is that overtime or comp?
We've always done it ahead of time, we've, when we put the sign boards out, when they go up the tent, we usually put that up like the week of, and we take them down when we come back, we don't have. We have no, we have no stake whatsoever in the race, we just do what little we can to help, we don't mag the road, we, we did that one year, we chlorided the road thinking we were gonna help, help them, so we got ahead of them and chlorided it instead of waiting, and that was a mistake.
They didn't like that.
They didn't like that, so that's the reason for this call, they called to make sure that we weren't chloriding yet.
You know.
Mag water hard on the bus.
I think it had, I think it had rained. It had rained and the road got kinda slippery and the bikes were going down.
Spinning, spinning up the hill, I can imagine.
Came down, watched your plate roll. I know, we follow the, so, and that's a recommendation. Okay. Second. We have a motion in the second. Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. That clear your calendar, John?
Aside from these city plats, I guess that's, well, it looks like the whole city's right behind you.
I know, I, I was mixing the, you've got all of our wires.
Is this on John? Let's find it, it's over here.
Did you need a sign though, does he need the sign?
We did already.
Oh.
You wanna say thank you?
That's okay.
So, Randy, what you have there is, is John Bay is doing following, uh, I think that's the road on, on one seventeen, on canyon. And that's the kind of report that he's doing now, presenting the findings.
Ken Marlowe, if you wanna bring a chair up and make us see if you're on there.
I think we have two plats in the legislature, and we have that one off on the dealer plat. I think it, it failed at your last meeting, one vote, two, the local order requires it, and three votes to pass the motion. And then there's also, that's on the first mile, I think it's going to be, I call it, and then there's another one on the second mile.
Correct, so, um, let's go ahead and start with the, uh, one on the second aisle. Um, the main thing we were waiting, waiting for on that plat was whether or not the Forest Service was gonna be able to sign off on that. Uh, basically, the day after our last meeting, uh, they had responded that they would not be signing off on the plat, didn't feel they had authority to do so. Uh, the main reason being that the last plat adjacent to that, uh, section of road was signed by the county, so.
Okay. That's on the county road, that's his Forest Service road, right?
It is, it's an easement, uh, there's a series of easements on the first and second mile of the county. They got it back from the Forest Service back in the fifties, and, uh, and so, uh, I did, uh, as an option, I did check with the register of deeds office, and if you're so inclined, you were to authorize either John or I acting on your behalf as highway authority and to write NA on there, if not applicable, um, that, that would be acceptable. For the limited purposes of the statute, which I think is to conformity with the county road system. And of course, also, I think the plat has the steps for language, language of eleven, three, twelve on there, says the county is not required to openly improve a road merely by signing the plat.
Does it have NA, will it also bear a signature?
That's up to you. I think it's prob-, probably what will be required.
I'll make a motion that first do that. Sign it right there.
I think I've done it in the past, to facilitate these conservices.
Second for discussion.
Okay. More discussion.
So, we've got a sign up there that's using the county commissioners, it's on the non-county right-of-way. We have one at the other end that's on the non-county right-of-way. So, uh, uh, we've got plats approved, a series of plats up there with a variety of highway signatures. But this, this is also a plat where there's one parcel across the road from the other that's isolated. And, uh, it's only creating two new ones.
There's no new.
No, the, the density is not changing.
It's, density is.
It's consolidation.
It's consolidation.
And it clears up that road split in.
And both plats already have local access, they both have accesses in place.
Approaches.
Not yet, exactly.
And who permitted those, do you know?
I'm not certain.
Not our roads, I think they just built them. So all that being said, you know, since we're not changing density or anything, we're holding hostage here as a landmark.
Okay, any further discussion? Seeing none?
Uh, can I just explain on the motion, is that this decided or is that to approve the plats?
We don't know, this is actually, but the city's spearfish approves these, we're only putting a signature block under the road.
Okay.
For limited shares.
Under the road. Got that.
And we're being, we're being redone that they have non-applicable, and then we have the statute that it's not ours, so. It, it cannot be filed without that blank being filled out.
I'm not, it's not redone.
And, and we've had this in the past where the Forest Service just refused to sign. So in theory, we're the first old road they hit.
Alright, we have a motion in a second to allow Bruce to sign the document and put NA on there, or is that, Bruce, is that completely not?
Yeah, it's along the theory of, when you've approved, I think, approach from this in the past, and other instances, sort of like the quick lane deed, uh, kind of theory, if that makes sense to everybody, that's the best I can make of it.
Okay, all those in favor of the motion, the force will say aye.
Aye.
Closed, motion carried.
Alright, given subdivision, nothing's changed on this one. Um, this will be going to city council for approval on Monday of next week. Um, same stipulations apply, uh, the lot lines need to be figured out to ensure that the drain field meets what our D A and R requirements, and then, uh, the right-of-way has to be fully cleared out, so.
Of course, this road is actually on the county system.
This section of this road.
Yes.
I'll be abstaining, Mr. Chairman.
So all we are doing once again is only putting, having the highway superintendent put his signature on this plat, it's been a, this is a city's spirit of plat, not a county plat. So if it meets their requirements, all we're doing is having the highway superintendent sign it saying, yes, county road's there. It's, does he already have the approach in place on these, you know? Or really need to come in and.
There was like a two-track going into that new lot, so he'll need to get an approach.
If he's gonna do anything wrong, okay? I'll make a motion to approve this, have the highway superintendent, or, to have the highway superintendent, allow the highway superintendent to sign.
Do you, do you agree with that, Bruce?
Yes. Uh, last, Richard, it failed one to two, and of course, like I said, you need at least three votes by your local law order, so, yeah, I have no reason not.
So this road is on the county system and you're maintaining it also?
Correct.
You're always maintaining it now.
Yep.
Yes, sir.
Was that a second, Richard?
Sorry.
Motion in a second, uh, I wanna, John, are you alright with this?
Yeah, I, I don't have any say in it either way, it doesn't, it's not gonna affect what we're doing. As long as I don't go to prison, I'm happy with it.
Alright, we have a motion in a second, uh.
Bruce? Yes.
All those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Alright, and then Mr. Alco, were we able to get the three mile discussion checked into?
Yes, please proceed.
Excellent. And did you have those slides? Awesome. Alright, so, we had a brief discussion of this, uh, three mile plat ordinance update. I think it was about two months ago now, I just kind of gave you guys a heads up that it was something that we were guiding you to. So, we got a chance to take this info before the city's planning commission and then also the city council. So, next step in this is bringing you guys up to speed on what we're thinking for updates to this three mile planning ordinance. So, uh, per S D C L eleven, six, twenty-six, county, or the city's, uh, may approve subdivisions up two to three miles outside of their, um, city limits, and the ultimate goal here is ensuring that development occurring within the G T J aligns with future growth and development goals, uh, set forth within the city's long-range plans. Um, the existing ordinance, uh, was written in nineteen eighty-five, to my knowledge, it hasn't been updated since, um.
Yeah, it has, two revisions.
Two revisions, okay. Um, but I don't know that there have been any major changes to it, it's a pretty cumbersome document, it's eighty pages. Uh, there's a lot of info in there and discussions with, uh, county planning and zoning. It was kind of one of the things that, when this, when I took this position, uh, my predecessor stressed this is something that's been needing to get updated for a long time, so.
Mr. Chairman, if I may. The, the updates primarily were eliminating the three-board process.
Okay.
That's what it was, the rest of it was pretty simple. You're getting into the meat now because it is terribly outdated, but at one time you had to come to the city, the three-mile extraterritorial board, and the county, and they all met once a month, so it was about six months to get a plat. So, that was, that was the primary effort in the revisions, to make it simple. And it was also an effort to make lot line revisions simpler, that it wasn't very effective, but that's what the two primary, as I recall, just the functionality of it was.
Thank you for that background, and that's, I mean, obviously, going from a six-month time to where we're at now, was an improvement, but I think there's still improvements that we can make in terms of timeline and process, uh, to better serve the, uh, the general public in this process. Not make them take any additional steps, um, than what statute requires, I think it's obviously important for people to be aware of what's going on in the property adjacent to them, but, um, yeah, the existing ordinance just has a couple of steps that's, uh, just really push the timeline out, that don't need to be in there. So, um, ultimately, the city's key concerns within the E T J are future right-of-way needs in alignment with our major street plan, uh, infrastructure standards and overall alignment with the city's long-range plans. So, some major kind of policies, uh, foundational policies that we're looking at through city line, in the next slide. Um, major policies that we've been discussing, um, city would continue to handle all plats within the three mile, it's my understanding that it is helpful for the county's P and Z team, um, for us to be able to take on that extra workload. So overall, county zoning would continue to apply, the city's long-range plans would apply, so that would be comprehensive plan, master transportation plan, and our master utility plans. Um, city infrastructure standards would apply within the one-mile area. Um, and then currently, the only, uh, the only way to, uh, not build things exactly to the specs, uh, listed within the ordinance are to pursue a variance, but, uh, we would build in an exception process, uh, which there's a little bit more leniency there, uh, instead of making, uh, variance a requirement. And then, uh, for the two to three mile area, uh, and what I wanna stress within the one mile area is, we would be taking, uh, anything directly adjacent to city limits is really what we're pushing for, improving the city standards. And then at that point, as long as it increases city standards, that section of road would be taken over by the city and maintained by the city. So what we wanna avoid, obviously, is any sort of leapfrog improvements, so that's where the exceptions piece comes into play. If you're a mile in on the road, we're not gonna make you pave it if everything prior to that is gravel. Uh, and then we'd have, uh, separate infrastructure requirements for copies within the two to three mile area. That being a minimum twenty-four foot wide road with gravel two foot shoulders, paved roads would actually, it would continue to be an option if the developer desired to pave the road. Um, all lots would need to be served by a well and outside wastewater system, needing, uh, minimum D A and R requirements. And then, uh, kind of taking that next step and thinking about long-term infrastructure needs, uh, requiring that tanks be accessible from the front of the lot instead of the rear, that way they're not having to punch a new hole through, uh, their foundation wall when surfaces are available in the, uh, right-of-way.
I'm motion for leave. So that I understand you right, you did, uh, change some things, uh, on the three mile back, two miles and back four mile?
So we'll still be handling all, and no changes have been made yet, we just want the chance to get this info before you guys allow time to review and comment, um, once, uh, once we have any major concerns and comments from your team, uh, I will take those into consideration as I'm drafting the ordinance. And then, this is all coming up in a later slide, but you guys will have the chance to review that ordinance. So at this point, nothing has been changed officially, these are just proposed changes, um.
Can we participate in that too, then?
Well, the, we would still handle all plats within the two to three mile, I think ultimately the goal is to get to a point where the ordinance has the county commission at a level of comfort that we don't need to be bringing all of the plats for approval of the highway signature. Um, it's not, I mean, it, it just adds a lot on city staff time, um, and we're happy to continue collaborating, but I guess if that is something that you guys wanna continue doing, uh, at least just having an option to do it virtually, uh, because it's a big lift on city staff. Um, so, items for additional discussion, uh, one thing that we, I've seen in other three mile agreements is basically if you're plating directly adjacent to city limits and you're being required to insert the infrastructure to city requirements, uh, then at that point you would basically just annex in, it would be part of the plating process, you would be required to annex in unless otherwise waived by council. That's something that council needs to provide us with a bit more. That's something that council needs to provide us with a bit more input on. We would need to write up very specific criteria on whether or not, when we would or would not require annexation. And then, plat exemptions, these are three exemptions that aren't, uh, currently in the three mile agreement, but we all saw that plat where the court ordered plat with the adverse possession case would just make things easier. Cemetery lots and, uh, and the plat per a governmental agency, uh, would also be exempt from the process. So, uh, the other thing that's not in there currently that I know the county enforces, uh, that I think it's important to get worked into this revised ordinance is the fire mitigation plan. And for the most part, everything in city limits is not quite up in the trees, but, uh, as we started hearing plaits in the three mile, it can kind of lead to dead by a thousand cuts on those dead-end roads, uh, in heavily forested areas. Everybody splits off one lot for their kids and have a hundred homes off the end of a dead-end road. Ultimately, if that road gets blocked and a fire, uh, situation, it's important that we have those fire mitigation plans in place to help protect life. And then, so, next steps, um, we're doing the top one currently, so, um, we wanna gather your guys' input at this point, uh, before I really start diving into drafting of this ordinance. Once that ordinance is drafted, uh, based on city council and, uh, county commission comments, I would send that over for your guys' review. And then ultimately, that ordinance would go for approval with city council. So, uh, yeah, those are really kind of the key policies that we're looking at. Wondering if you guys have any major questions or concerns on any of those.
Mr. Chairman. Well, if I understand the process, county really doesn't have a dog in the fight. Once this ordinance was put in place, all the revisions are managed by the city, so I really appreciate two things. One, that it's being done, 'cause I've been pushing to have it done for a decade. And two, that you've come to us for some input. That's really nice, and I do really appreciate that. But the considerations I would have is I really think that master transportation plan, which was filed, I believe, in two thousand twelve.
Yeah.
I think some of it's eleven, that it's a little unrealistic, so maybe an update of that would coincide with this.
So we're aiming to get that updated in twenty-five.
Because some of those roads were never built, so on there, the lines are shown where you camp them. And then, I've advocated for quite some time to have a member on your planning and zoning board from three mile. And I know that it's not allowed now, but on your parks board, you have three mile people on there. And right now, I live in the three mile and I have no representation on the planning and zoning board, 'cause it's all city people. So since you're exercising this right, if that person could be on there, I think it'd be very helpful for those of us that live in the three mile. On the cemetery, statutorily, you don't have to do a plat, do a cemetery map. So I'm not sure how you can regulate that unless it's in the zoning ordinance, so you might look into that. Because we don't have to do a plat, we can do a map, file it directly, the register of deeds per statute. And then, I think the issue that we really need to talk about, I don't know when and where that will take place, is the acquisition of right-of-way and doing it as acquired fee, and who owns it, who's responsible for it. And I think we need to look at that in the one mile and the, out to the three mile and see if we have a policy on it and work with you on that. I think that's critical.
Yeah.
How that can work. And has there been, maybe this is more for your attorney, I know Bue, Balfourshire's been doing it for years where they force annexation against the city. They don't have a waiver process. It can, can city, or do cities normally do that?
So, the ordinance that I'm most familiar with that involves this annexation process is the City Rapid Cities. So, uh, that's something I'd like to look into.
And, and I, I say that because down Lower Valley, you know, it's, it's a donut hole. When you come from all the sides and, and they don't have city infrastructure for them, and they're zoning to serve density. So that's Syria probably that is the best example to look at.
Yeah. Regarding right-of-way, uh, we require the right-of-way be plotted out. Uh, that's not something that will change. That's in line with our master transportation plan, major street plan. That is, we have to have utilities within the right-of-way. Ultimately, I also think that's, I think it's a better service to the public to dedicate the right-of-way out, because, uh, if you keep this easement on their property that ultimately they can't use anyways, yet they have to pay taxes on, uh, I think that it benefits the general public more if that just ends up getting dedicated out. I think that also takes any potential, uh, liability off of those properties. But I think that's kind of the primary difference between county right-of-way needs and city right-of-way needs. That is why the three mile ETJ exists, is ultimately to make sure that our major street plan and infrastructure needs are addressed in the long term. So that we're not making costly right-of-way services in the future, which ultimately affects the taxpayers. So, uh, that's not something that we intend to change within this update. Uh, our right-of-way definition will remain the same as it is. I, you guys had asked me to reach out to communities on the east side of the state, which I did, um, consistently, uh, among all of those communities, the right-of-way gets dedicated out, because again, cities have to have utilities in right-of-way, counties don't necessarily. So I think that's where the primary difference plays, between right-of-way needs.
Okay. Further discussion on, uh, so at this point, we're, we just need to mull it over, huh?
Yeah. I mean, if you guys have any major concerns, feel free to email me, uh, if those, as those come up. I'll be digging into the actual draft in of this ordinance over the next few weeks. I hope to have something in place by the end of July. But, yeah, any major rights flags, I need to know about those now.
Well, I know that the existing ordinance speaks to having a public hearing even for a lot line revision. I assume you're gonna take care of some of that process. No changes, move forward.
Yeah.
Would you require them to re, to set out the right-of-way and a lot line revision, give up their property?
Generally, yes. You just don't know when that property is going to plat again, and ultimately, if that, if we don't acquire it at that time, uh, it can cost us in the long run.
So I'm gonna throw a wrench at you. If I have two two-acre lots and zoning requires me to have a two-acre minimum, and I give up the right-of-way and I'm at one point seven or one point eight, I'm no longer in compliance with the zoning ordinance. Would you not then let them approve the plat?
It wouldn't be your business.
So they couldn't do a lot line revision?
Just, just a right-of-way question, just, uh, when you were talking about the, the two to three mile zone, you were following the comprehensive plan, that's the city's comprehensive plan, isn't it?
Yep.
So that does not include then the county, even though that would be outside the city limits?
So.
Or do you take into consideration the county's comprehensive plan?
I'm not sure to what level, uh, when our existing, much like the master transportation plan, uh, our compliance region, one of its lifespan. So, um, we just got approval to, uh, engage a consultant on that. I intend to have Amber as part of that steering committee. Uh, so yeah, with the existing comprehensive plan, I'm not sure to what extent, um, the county's comprehensive plan was taken into account and how those policies overlap. But, uh, we do intend on having county staff in on the city's comprehensive plan update process, uh, to ensure that that voice is heard and, um, ultimately, the, uh, major street plan would have taken into account, the master transportation plan would have taken into account that the three mile. But it's something we'll make sure is taken into account when that's, uh, updated.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions or discussion from our? Bruce, do you have something?
Steven and Ashley are here as well. I don't know if any of yous have, used to recognize them to be here. Thank you.
I think the majority of everybody understand. I mean, we've already been discussing, I don't know what has been the problems. Does everybody understand on the board the difference between the joint jurisdiction agreement that we have for TUDAs, floodplain and all that stuff, and this document? Because it is two separate documents. The other one, we're not discussing. Yeah, it's just the ETJ, which is three mile plating, which they can do by statute. The other one is the agreement that we have of who's gonna do building permits, who's gonna do, at what point. So just, you have to kind of keep that context in mind as we're discussing all of this. It's two separate documents.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your guys' time.
We're gonna take a quick break. Mr. Chairman, there is, we had one more plat, um, I think it was along the Baywood Road. I don't know if John Bay had signed it. I did.
Was it this one here?
It's taken here, nevermind.
Yep.
Quick break.
I'll take it. I can take it back. I'll just take it back to the attorney.
Okay.
Oh, here. I'll give it to these folks. David, David.
This is a killer.
I have no service.
So.
Okay. Um, this first one, so. Okay, reliable, that's cool. So Irene Warner, which is Warner subdivision on, okay, on the Kirk Mountain Road. She is proposing to do four lots. This is a layout at planning and zoning. I think that the biggest discussion, I have a feeling we're going to continue to have this discussion, is that this road is not a county maintained road. John did state that in the meeting that he doesn't go down Kirk Mountain Road at all. And so we're to that area that do we, can't really give them a approach permit, but you could have three or four driveway in a row on this plat. But it's not our road to decipher that. And who's going to sign the plat? We're going to have that issue. I have one continuously because this is not a the closest one would be Kirk City.
Didn't we also ask you to reach out with the Forest Service?
We did, yeah, regarding if they even have an access permit. For one, you know, because a lot of these roads, we're starting to see that they never had permission to be on their basis. So I haven't heard anything. The Forest Service has been pretty good about when our agendas come out, not a layout plan so much. They don't usually comment. But when the preliminary plat comes in, they have been pretty good about commenting, just saying, hey, this is their current access. This is what they have. And I've been trying to include that in staff reports if we get that comment. So I don't know if that's maybe why we haven't seen a comment yet on this one because it is layout. It usually seems like they wait till it's in plating.
This road's probably a two-four set. I didn't notice. And it's the one ends up on the Wild Burger Road on the other side. Could you go all the way through to Boulder Canyon?
Um, you can.
Like a long one time ago?
Yeah, you can. And then they gate it like in the winter time. The gate gets closed and stuff.
Probably said it's a wagon trail.
Probably. So I just haven't heard of it again. Yep.
Mr. Chairman. So the polygonal piece that's being exempt here, that that's not part of tract one, apparent property?
It's, it's not. That is, um, that's her current house. It's her residence. She wants to keep her residence.
But it's, is it part of tract one that's this is being extracted from?
It's been platted out before.
I think it's been platted already.
Okay.
That's, that's how I feel.
This doesn't show it on here.
Yeah, it looks like it's a previous plat and they're plating around it.
Okay. And then the super fun site, do we have any restriction on that other than showing it?
No, we just show it because then when they, we have to look at that. There are restrictions on how close they can build, if they have water, not water. There's certain restrictions that we have to look at if they come in for building.
Okay. I just noticed that down in note four, Whitewood WJ, although it's pronounced as an H in Spanish. They might want to correct their spelling.
It's getting naked.
Yeah. And, and this was dedicated on a plat 2013, thirty, some, some number. So what we just heard was the Forest Service wouldn't sign it because it's already dedicated and that plat was apparently signed by us.
I would assume, yes.
I may be checking.
That's kind of how we used to do it is we would sign it because the closest access is Kirk City Road. But this is just a layout. So I just, we're trying to, I'm trying to bring these to you so that if there's some concerns, I can let the surveyors know, hey, you need to look at this or this. And that's kind of what we're doing.
How are they getting into lot one?
That was a question that got brought up at the meeting too. We said there's no, there's no access.
Well, yeah, on plating, they're going to have to show that's required access regardless of whether we own it or not.
Yep. Yep.
So how do they get, how do they get to lot one? And if it's going to be a split between two and three, one access?
It'd be a driveway that they're doing in or what? And she said they would work on that to determine that.
Two and three's got a bad corner before it hits threes.
Okay.
So it sounds like access is definitely, we told them they need to work on their access issues all the way across the board. So I think that's fair.
We don't need to action on it. We don't need action on this.
Have they usually done, you guys have usually either approved the layout to move forward with your concerns or not? That's because then they'll go to preliminary plat phases. And I know the P and D board motioned to continue the layout or not. They ended up just saying that the easement and access to lots with the Kirk Mountain Road versus Forest Service Road, that was their concerns that they brought up. So I guess it's your fault. And Bruce isn't here to ask, so I'm not sure.
I'll agree with those comments. I didn't know we'd take the motion on that. I don't remember doing that.
We'll just put in the minutes that your concerns are consistent with the planning and zoning concerns, is that correct? Access?
I would ask that the minutes reflect that, that the concerns of the planning and zoning are similar to the commission.
And that included the fact that it was the Forest Service Road?
Yeah, it's briefly. Vote is concerned about the easement now since Kirk Mountain Road is a Forest Service Road.
Thank you.
Whatever name, final plat, four bears and the yellows.
I might have missed putting that one in the drive.
Yeah, I don't see.
I think I did. I apologize for that. That one is a lot line revision. They're, they're not creating any new lots. This is, if you remember, there was a gentleman that had come in to try to get a variance on one of the lots for a garage. This was a couple of months ago. And we had told him, no, this is a brand new lot. You need to make it work. Well, based on that, they ended up moving all of the lot lines, making them just a little bit bigger. So it's, they, they did a number of them. So it's six B one, seven A one, nine A one, ten A one, eleven A one, eleven B one, and twelve A one. Because of the fact that they were having trouble fitting structures where they needed to be. So instead of doing individual lots, they just said, well, we'll do all of it. So it's a lot line revision. There's a preliminary and final.
Well, that's great.
That's what it looks like if you want to see it. They kind of laid out the, the structure, but I think it's seven.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, did they reduce the lot numbers by one?
Hmm, no, not really. They, they moved them all just a tad because one of the lots was big enough.
And so the existing lot lines that went through there have no utilities? That they need to maintain utilities?
And the setbacks are still going to, to comply with all setbacks even with the local ones?
Yeah, it actually helps it. They're struggling with meeting setbacks. So that's why they're leaving them.
It encroached, so that's why they.
Well, they basically had to move them all.
So we're not creating any new problems?
No, and actually I think it'd be fixing problems.
If you're fixing one, you create another.
Yep.
Their fire plan is already in place.
Yeah.
Right?
Yep.
Motion to approve the preliminary and the final?
That's, yeah.
We need an exempt motion too.
They already have. It says that, but they already got.
Yeah, they already did everything.
I'll second the motion. Hey, we have motion and a second. Further discussion? Not all of us in favor of the motion will say aye. I oppose. Motion carried.
So this next one is, I'm assuming you have to recuse yourself from it, Randy?
All right, I did.
Okay. This next one is C and D veteran. John Fredrickson is here for this one as well. This is the one that had come in to you previously. And they, they ended up changing the lot lines so that it's two and two. So the access would be two lots on each side of the access points, the east road and the west road, where the other one, it was a possibility three, which put it over the threshold of two or more. So they moved the lot lines so that there is no more than two. And so with that, I feel like it does meet the ordinance requirements. At the planning and zoning meeting, Tavis was present and he is the adjacent land, Tavis Little was present. I don't hear his name. And he had stated that they are working with the other landowners to come up with a plan on what they're going to do on that road. And they had no concern, I guess, at this time, except for possible, they may be coming in for a vacation to the section line on that portion of that side of the road, but they haven't yet. I haven't seen anything, but I know that was being discussed. Anything else, John? Do you want to add to it?
Um, I would just follow up that I, I went out and I met with two of the other, actually three of the landlord for the, where Tavis lives. And we're going to be meeting again and coming up with a maintenance plan.
Okay. Anything further, anybody?
Looks like the fire plan, this is already done.
Yeah, fire plan was completed.
We don't need to do that. So we'll make motion to approve the preliminary.
I'll second it. Further discussion? Seeing none, all of us in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Final?
Make motion to approve the final.
Sorry. Yep, we have a motion and a second to approve the final. Further discussion? Seeing none, all of us in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Thanks.
Boundary plat, Amber. Here, Deer Mountain.
Yep.
Randy.
So I think honestly, this one's going to be easier. There's so much going on that the this is probably going to be easier to look at. If you guys want to see that, do you know, do you want to see this one or you pay with the?
I know, I've seen.
This one's a little easier because the online version is pretty hard to see. Yeah. So this is the Deer Mountain subdivision. Nothing has changed with overall layout or what they're proposing. But they are doing a boundary line or a boundary plat around the bottom portion of the subdivision, which is, I would say, kind of the city center. Not city, I shouldn't say city center. That's not right. The Deer Mountain Center. It's in the area that the lodge used to sit in, we'll say kind of down on the bottom. So this will be the new boundary plat of block A one, which you can kind of see right in here. These were some old lots that had been platted out of Mystic Minor, but those are going away. And then they will be vacating some of the road here. But this is just kind of laying it out. So we have a good boundary of where they're going to start to build right on, right down in this area. There's lots going on there. Different docks associated with it. The roads are there. And then we'll be seeing here over the next couple of months, you're going to be seeing the detailed plans for that section. Like they're going to be coming in with what the layout's going to look like and the roads and all this stuff.
So we've got some cleanup to take care of that. Is that a road right away that's?
There's an old, yeah, this was an old one where those old lots were, Tansy Tail or Tansy Trail was in there. That's, that's all kind of stuff that we're trying to deal with now. Vacated.
I've seen another one. There's like a single lot in there too.
Well, those lots, one through six, were in there. You can kind of see them. Those were an old plat.
Oh, okay.
That it, it had been reported, but nothing had ever been built on them. So those are going to go away now too.
This is what I was looking at. I don't need to, but there's one, one blue dot that was excluded from this, but it looks like it's not on that one.
Well, yeah, yeah.
So this isn't quite the same. Doesn't match this much. Okay, so we're just, we're just approving that part of the boundary plat?
Just this, yeah, the other, the block A already exists. This is going to be A one. So the big boundary we did a while ago. Now this is just going to be another boundary within that. So we have two separate boundaries. We have A and A one now.
And do they have their fire plan complete or they?
The fire plan is almost done. This, do you know on this bottom portion, if it's done, it's closed.
It's closed. Well, we need to do exempt.
Um, boundary plots, we don't necessarily need one. I think by the time they get to the preliminary and final of the actual lots, yes, we would need.
Okay, this is a preliminary.
This is just a boundary plot final.
Okay, I'll make motion to approve.
Sorry. Okay, we have motion and a second for approval. Any further discussion? All of us in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Motion carried. Got that shifty surveyor on that one.
Did.
This is the one.
Yeah, this is. And so again, Eric and Richard, if this one helps. This is the next one we're talking about. I'm going to take these though before they disappear.
Don't get snatched up and up.
Just hold me here. Just put it up there. Okay, so this is the revised preliminary plat, one, two, and ten through seventy-three and seventy-five through a hundred. We have approved a preliminary already. So this kind of, there's a couple of pages here, so bear with me.
Graphics blocks are still turned off. Which is very confusing when you don't realize what's going on right there. It's just the numbers.
No.
We've got to go back.
They said this is going to be the easiest one to look at because these were really, and it's because we got a new one after that one out. So I have to go, Bruce, you have access to the planning and zoning stuff? Come on.
Just go to six, right?
There it is. Good night. There it is. There's still a lot at this page. So this, this one matches the printed one. There was a few changes made. So that's that one. This is the revised preliminary. And I guess detail wise, Randy's here and so is Eric, if you want to explain anything with this revised preliminary.
Sure.
There wasn't really a lot of changes per se. There was just some online changes.
We, block A one is the intended kind of base of mountain operations, commercial multifamily. So we've kind of drawn that block out of the larger block eight. Because the balance of block A is single family homes. So this kind of base of mountain area is going to be where clubhouse, mountain operations, apartments, these kind of things to support, to support the overall destination. Thought this was a little bit better planning tool to use instead of encumbering the entire block. True. And then we're about to submit development plan to show all the detail of that build and mountain based area. Next bridge we crossed.
Okay. So I guess for, for layout wise, you just did the boundary. This is now the preliminary, including that new boundary layout. Because we have to kind of have that process because it wasn't in the original revised. It wasn't in the original.
So you, this one has block A and block eight?
Correct, yeah.
What is, what is the little flag pole unplatted between block A and block A one?
You took.
Yeah, that, that strip down there, yep.
So ours alone by, not, not owned by Indian Resources.
Yeah, they don't own it.
Is it B L M or is that what those guys?
It's an eligible private owner.
Surveyor's going to say it through the door.
It's a mineral survey that's owned by, it's identified on page with the past ownership.
Okay, what's your pleasure on motion? So, so there's an easement that, that private ownership, is that a part of road?
I may, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Nothing has changed on this from what we approved before. There is an easement going across here. There's actually three easements going across there. All this red shows is the block A one being now superimposed on the preliminary plat. So the preliminary plat now matches what we just approved. So that's the whole end here. None of the other internal workings have changed on this. It's just a duplicate with those red lines on. So it's just a modification.
I will make a motion to approve this plat once all the private landowners adjacent to it are submitted on it as required by ordinance.
There's a, there's a.
Is there a separate block?
There's more.
I didn't see the hole.
Yeah, it's on sheet three.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion. I'll sorry, I'm a second. Further discussion? Seeing none, all of us in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Motion carried.
All right, Amber. Thank you.
Donuts? Caramel rolls are fine.
Yeah. Final plat, Mark Mayer.
So this one is seventeen R and eighteen R. This is a lot line revision between the two lots. Honestly, I don't really know the purpose of it. It's just a light little tiny slur of a change. I don't know if there was a tree or there's no structures on them right now. So that's why we just have a final. Infrastructure's all in, roads are in, everything's in. They're just making a change. It's the same owner.
Move to follow the recommendation of planning and zoning and approve the final plat.
Right.
Okay, motion and a second. Further discussion? Seeing none, all of us in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried.
Amended preliminary and final, Black Hills Development LLC.
Yep, so this is an amended preliminary and new final plat. We did do exempt on this one. I don't know if they necessarily needed to, but they're not making any changes to this particular plat. They're cutting the larger lot in half to put townhouses. So it'll be a common. Cutting the larger lot in half to put townhouses, so it'll be a common law between two townhouses. Those are allowed in this district, they go towards a total density. Water's in, sewer's in. All of their stuff is into this one.
First motion will be for exemption. So move.
Second question. They have a fire plan in place, right?
They do, like I said, it, it's one of those things. Sometimes we do them, sometimes we don't, because they didn't wanna have to do anything additional, which they don't have to, cause all the infrastructure's there.
Oh, cause they wouldn't wanna, they wouldn't wanna do it for the whole outlined property.
Correct.
If it's done here, okay, I'm with that.
Okay, the motion is second for make the parcel exempt, all those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. What's your pleasure on the preliminary and final?
Can we see the preliminary?
It's busy, but it's there.
So the revisions are in magenta or red? Or blue? Must be in blue.
The green line right here is the blue, there's your lot lines right there.
Oh, this is final.
It's, yeah.
Is there, is there, there's not anything built on these yet, exactly?
No, there's no structure, they're just getting ready to.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve the preliminary and the final, any further discussion?
Quick question.
Go ahead.
This is just an update of the, of overlay update of the new lot configuration.
Yeah.
It's all the criteria.
Yep, it's a revised preliminary of the original.
And then the final to follow it, just like what we just.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, all those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
The next two plats we've looked at, you guys approved the preliminary last month, and that was for Whitewood Creek Ranch LLC, one is Will Johns and one is Abby Lampiers. Um, Will Johns is changing one R and two R, and it's because we didn't wanna leave a remainder, so he went ahead and clad up the remainder. So that's why you see one R and two R. Um, the original lot one was only five acres that he received from his grandpa. And now he is increasing that to fifteen acres. Um, the fifteen acre lot will be taken out of the LLC and put into Will Johns' name personally. And then, um, the two R will remain within the LLC as the ranch. But we didn't wanna leave a remainder, so they went ahead and. He wanted to just clean it up. Um, there's a forty foot access in there that was already previously done, and that's his driveway to his house. This is just a final today, cause you guys already approved the preliminary?
Motion to approve the final. Sorry. Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve the final, all those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Second one.
And the next one is the ten acres being broken off of the LLC. Um, for Abby Lampier, which is Will Johns' sister, and they will keep. Same thing, the rest of it is gonna be outside of it, but they're breaking off the ten.
And this is just the final, cause the others have been here already?
You, you guys did the final.
Question, if I may, Mr. Chairman. Does any of this affect the land that's included in the CUP? For the dog kennel?
No, that's her, that's a different landowner.
That's just her mother.
Well, but she got that land out of the LLC already.
Okay, alright, thank you.
So it's not.
Move to follow the recommendation, approve the final plat.
Sorry. Okay, we have a motion in a second, further discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
All right, Amber.
Okay, um.
Canyon LLC.
Well, we skipped the update, so you want me to do the canyon thing? Let's see, where are you at?
No, I'm on the final.
Oh, lot eight, Rim Rock, I forgot about Rim Rock. So that one, um, I didn't really have much, cause you guys had. This was one of those that you had already looked at a while ago. And we were only waiting on, um. John being able to get out there, cause it was so much snow, he couldn't, he, he couldn't go out to actually look at it yet. And he did go out there, um, so it didn't go back before planning and zoning, because they had already approved the original one. But John did get out there and he, um, had no problems with it overall. And I don't remember if.
Did it report?
He did, yeah, there was a, I think it printed one. Um, and that's gonna be his new. Like kind of his new way of doing the road things, this is what he's gonna be presenting to you guys. Um, I thought it worked out really well, but we just got it before, I think we got it after you guys tackled this one out, maybe.
I don't see that they tried.
Pretty sure it was there.
Under John's, man?
Go ahead, Randy.
Is the fire plan complete?
Yes, the fire plan was done already.
So the last approval was looking at the roads and getting highway service to look at the roads.
Yep.
And that has been, uh.
Yep.
John has really stepped up.
Move to approve it as presented?
And the grade, question, there was a great question before, wasn't there?
Yes, and.
And that has been mitigated?
I would say that according to John's stuff, he is comfortable with as it is, cause there's really nothing else to be done.
Does it comply with the ordinance?
I think we granted it.
He granted.
Granted the exceptional, right?
Yep, yep. It was, we, we had all the stuff done, but because there was so much snow, he couldn't actually go out and visually make sure of that, the requirements.
Correct. Who's second?
Nobody.
Wait, second. Now we have a motion in a second, uh, further discussion. Well, yeah, basically what I understood we had last is we granted the exception, they did the best they could. And what we had left to approve was John Bay's inspection of the, of the roads, to make sure that he was comfortable with it.
Is there some concern about the Forest Service? Forest Service had?
We'd already addressed that with, he, he had, that had already been addressed before we got to this point. The way I understand, is that right, Amber? The only thing outstanding was the approval of the roads as constructed.
Yeah, I did visit with John yesterday, and he indicated that he did go out and look at, it was acceptable.
Yeah, he did a report.
All right, we have a motion in a second, all those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
I still.
I'm trying to find it, cause it was in there.
If I could have just.
Absolutely. I had it in email.
I just wanted.
Didn't get on the drive, I came and saw it.
I did wanna, you just tie dated, he was attorney that started with our office, he's gonna be working with me, so I wanted to bring him, so we can find folks today.
What, are you contemplating retirement?
Yeah.
My question is for the young man, you sure you want him as your mentor?
Well, he's been pretty good so far, I'll take a suggestion.
John, so these have to be sold, they can't just quit.
Well, I know that, I was supposed to be done three years ago.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nice to meet you.
And I, there's nothing in the, this is just the second reading of that changes zoning request of the pockets. Um, that you guys saw everything last time, so I don't usually reprint anything, it's already put in, nothing has changed, this is just the second reading on that one.
Okay, that's the board's pleasure. On the back of the cell.
Yep.
On the back, motion approved.
Yep. Second.
Give it motion in a second, further discussion.
Well, tell me, uh, one way there, they want a big dollar piece is what they wanted, is that right? They wanted to be able to divide it up, so each one of them had to be a dollar amount?
That is their reasoning behind it, yes.
Yeah. How, how did that work? They each got forty acres, whether still.
What, uh?
One has a house on it.
Six hundred and twenty-four acres.
The house is worth way more than the land, when it comes down to it, so that's why they have to divide it off, so some gets a portion of the house with land and some doesn't.
Some get, one gets a portion of the house.
One will get the house with some land, and one will just get the remaining of the land.
Okay, I was wondering, uh, it worked, or it didn't look very.
So that's why it's not an even forty, because the house is worth more. Than with no house on it.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
And the plat will have to go through the city of Spearfish, we will not, we won't do the planning part of it, so this is, they have to have the changes zoning bill before they can go forward to actually plot on.
Okay. I have a motion in a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
So, basically, it's, it's been approved, I have a document that I need to get in the paper, so you have twenty days. Of an appeal period, um, but you can probably start with the city of Spearfish, you know, through their planning part, so, okay?
Thank you very much.
Yep. Okay, the only thing I have left, um, is, we had said that at the first meeting of county commission, I will give you an update as to what is to come. For the next meeting. Um, I provided the minutes, these are still draft minutes, so the planning and zoning board hasn't commented on it yet, to provide you with changes, but we have a lot going on. Um, you saw what the plaits look like, they're not slowing down, I'll have at least as many as I have this month, next month. And due date is Wednesday of this month, of this week. Um, for the upcoming meeting, you're gonna see. The first item, David Elson and Jeremy Elson for a changes zoning off of Pitten, that did get continued until June first, so now it's gonna push off until by the end of June, in front of you guys. Um, that one was a changes zoning request from A2 to Park Forest, but they have some underlying issues that they're trying to look out for landowners around them. Um, the next one is. An amendment to the master plan land use map that was, is a part of the Powderhouse Pass development, they are now to the point of starting to do some commercial development, which we had talked about. Um, so the land use map still needs to be updated in there. And at the last meeting, um, planning and zoning did make a recommendation to approve portions. Of that land use map, but they excluded the two pieces that were along Black Forest Road, so they did not allow those two to be designated as a commercial area. But the stuff along the highway, the highway service commercial, I would consider, cause it's right along the highway, did. Um, I don't know, I'm assuming at this point that they are going to bring the same land use map to you guys for approval. Hoping that you will not agree with what the planning and zoning board did. So that's at, that's your guys' call to me, when it's here next week, or next two weeks. Um. And then Casey and Heidi Keo also have a conditional use permit request, that will be before you on May twenty-third at nine forty-five. And that one is for a wedding venue. Um, and they are redoing barn, it sits right next to. Big Mama's, it's, it's the next lot over. Um, and so it's consistent with the area. Also, on the other side of this is gonna be the new driveway that goes up to the lot that got transferred to South Coast Blue Lines. It's kind of all in that area, and that's gonna be the driveway right around this, to that one.
Been doing everything wrong.
No, this one's okay. So, that's that one coming forward. Um, the next one is Kurt and Dennis Bauer at the end of Budat Road. Um, that one is for a long-term campground, they pull them in in May and leave in October. Um, they're not gonna be a nightly where they can come and go, but it's gonna be long-term. They are the only landowner out there that's surrounded by Forest Service, they live out there. Um, their daughter lives out there and their son is building a house out there as well.
County road.
County road all the way to it.
Ted Johnson's old place up there.
Yeah. And, um. So yeah, that's where that one is. And then there was a public hearing on the North Star Construction GF Development with this, which is Heath Brand. For one of the small scale gravel pits, it was very full room, uh, lots of people, you know, making their comments known. And when it got down to the bottom, there was one gentleman that. Questioned his notice. But we couldn't prove anything right at that point, because we didn't have all the green cards back, well, basically what it came down to after I was able to get ahold of the post office and pull it up, his wife had signed for it. Um, so that's between him and his wife, I guess, but in the end, um. He will probably say something about it at the meeting, he has not bothered to contact me. So I have that in, it shows his wife's signature on it, we got a copy of it from the post office.
Well, he was very aware of it, errand loaded for bear, so.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll see how that goes, um, but basically what was opted to happen is they decided to motion to continue that meeting to the June first, so it, it will be put off. Till the end of June. Um, based on just some issues that they were still having, and, uh, Tim Comer, who's the new, new owner of planning and zoning board, did a very nice job of really helping go through those and. Ask for a lot of detail that at the time, I would say he and, uh, North Star couldn't answer.
Right.
So they were gonna work on that.
Um, you're gonna schedule an onsite, right?
Their goal is to, but they decided to wait until, uh, the June first meeting to actually schedule the onsite.
Okay, if they do, can we combine that with any commissioners and do a notice, notice of quorum?
I think the idea, if I may, was.
They're gonna try to do this one and the other one all at the same day.
Let them get caught up together, cause the other one had more detail.
Okay, alright, thank you.
So.
Yeah, one was very well spared, the other one was.
So we'll, we'll keep moving forward with that one, but that's kind of where that's at. And then you can see upcoming informational meetings started this month, so these will be July into August before you see them. Um, the first, the, the, the four informationals that you see are all the same applicant, same property, they have to amend the ordinance to add what they wanna do first. We're already receiving. Calls on them, and to start it out, I just found out yesterday, she came in to show us. How good she did sending her notices out, she said it's not wrong, so she's just moved on over again.
Oh, wow.
So.
So that whole discussion is whether we wanna allow that conditional use in that zoning.
Correct, and there's two of them, there's a wedding venue and a campground in suburban residences. This is the one that's, yes.
Yeah, sweet little girl, but.
And she told you, I've just been doing it all wrong.
She's not hiding anything.
No, she's not hiding it. Um, this is a situation that she held some weddings slash camping situations last summer, we notified her. Well, she didn't work on it at all till now, so I told her she can't do anything this summer, we asked her to work on it over the winter, and she opted not to, and. So now we're where we are, um, yeah, it's fun. And then the informational meeting also took place for the Larson family LLC, um, with Kroll, Ready Mix, and a work for us, small scale gravel pits, same general location, Home State Road. Um, so that will be a public hearing on June first in front of planning and zoning, so it'll be to you guys maybe, end of June, beginning of July, we don't really know yet, it just depends on how close. Um, I will say it was very, very nice, um, John Bay was at our entire planning and zoning meeting, and it did not go unrecognized, I think everybody really appreciated, cause he was able to answer a lot of the questions with. You know, the access, the road concerns, especially with the gravel pits, I think it was very well received, like he was present. Um, and from what I understand, he's going to try to be at those, but if not, he will get ahold of me before and will go through everything, and he'll have like a list of, like his comments for me, either by email if he can't make it. So that's just, and he's been very, very good to. If I ask him to comment on something, he gets back to me within, you know, a couple of days usually, sometimes he stops in the office, um, he's been stopping in. At least once a week, like when he comes down to check the mail or whatever, it's, it's been really good. And you can see his plan with like his little report that he put together, that's, that's really nice. There was some discussion on public hearings, so I just wanted to ask you guys about it, I, I think we've kind of dealt with it, but, uh. There's been a lot of issues with public hearings lately, like just Dale Johnson, she's like, I got them all sent, and I'm like, but you didn't send them certified return receipt. It says it right in the paperwork, certified return receipt, so you have to mail them out again, that's like a three hundred dollars statement. Um, so I've had, some entities are starting to mail those four people. And charging them, like, here's your mailing charge plus your application charge. Um, because then we know it gets done correctly. That's a lot on staff to prepare all those and get them ready and send them out, I can do that, but it had been brought up. Also, it had been brought up that planning and zoning, we require mailings for planning and zoning and county commission, that is not state law, state law you only have to do for county commission. We've always had it in our ordinances that you have to do it on phone, so it had, it was brought up by, by Mike Wayland, why do we do that? I just wanna make sure that that's still what you wanna continue to do. I'm fine with it, I don't, it doesn't bother me, it is, it is additional cost.
From my standpoint, I don't see a reason to do two mailings for applying zoning information, I, I've, I've received those before, you know, you get the first one, you understand what.
I, I've, I've received those before, you know, you get the first one, you understand what the project is, and the second one comes. Um, it's not worth the trip to town for me to get it out of the mailbox, and then it screws up the planning and zoning office because.
Yeah, we don't approve. And we can double check on it, but I think county commission is the one that has to have.
That's the second one. That's the second one. So the, the second one comes, you get the notice in, in your mailbox that there's one in there. And from my standpoint, well, I know what the project is at that point, I'm not gonna drive to town and get it, but then it doesn't notify us.
But you weren't, well, in planning and zoning, you don't have to be.
But I wasn't for the commission. See, I picked it up for the planning and zoning, so I knew what the project was, but I wasn't, I didn't pick it up.
Real split's appear for that.
Well, you know, I would point out that the planning and zoning notices do seem to draw a lot of people for, for different, uh, things like the gravel pits, and, and I don't know if, um, if those people all would have known about it as, as having noticed it not being sent. And so, and I understand all that, uh, it, it's been done, I think, as long as I've been here. And folks might feel slighted that all of a sudden it's gone from planning and zoning to getting to county commissioners, and this is their first, their first opportunity to know about it, that makes sense? So that, that's a balancing act going on.
So there's nothing, we don't have the ability to waive the county one, correct?
No, and, and I think Amber's correct, that you can post the, the planning and zoning rule on yourself, or it's, it's just been that way, I think, as long as I've been here. So, yeah, it'll be a way around that, and that would be the same.
Well, um, to me, the mailings are not that difficult. I would also suggest that if you do the mailings and somebody doesn't pick it up, you've made contact. They don't have to pick, they don't have to pick it up. You just have to have proof that you mailed it, so that makes it a lot cleaner.
Yeah.
Yeah. And so that's, if, if you can't, I mean, we do it all the time in multiple counties. And I, I kind of like the fact that this has a public hearing at the planning and zoning, because it, that's a lot of the issues and good decisions are made. Otherwise, they're gonna come to us at a public hearing, we're gonna shove it back to planning and zoning, because we have questions that they need to look at. That's what's happening in other counties.
That's what I would agree with.
So I like having the public hearing, um, and I don't know how else to get them to notice.
Yeah, I mean, I was gonna act to what he said, I think that planning and zoning, I think you get a bunch of people to come out and ask a bunch of questions. That would, they end up having another meeting on top of that, it might be, it's gonna cost them more money, but it's gonna save them a month.
Easily, yeah. And the only time it usually seems to be a money issue is like, I will tell you, for Johnson, she had thirty-some mailings.
Because she's in suburban residential.
She's in suburban residential, so for her, the mistake is gonna cost her double what she started with, but that was also a mistake to me. Um, I, I will say I'm working on our notification letters, I think our letters need to be, it's the same letter, it's been that way for however long. Um, it's just a process to get them updated, because it's not just something that you type it up, it's all curated, so.
Rich, you had a comment first.
I don't know that there's a way that we could do one notice with advising them of multiple public hearings, one, one changes. Uh, it's, it's a bit presumptuous, and so I, you know, I don't know if there's a workaround there either, it's, it's easy to do.
Okay.
Well, then I don't advocate having the county send them out. Way too muh, way too much paperwork, you know, it's, it's, if, if they need to hire somebody, I mean, remember we had a lady that had a section on vacation, that she hired somebody to get signatures for the petition, a hundred and twenty. If you want it successful, you gotta be engaged or hire somebody.
Well, we don't need that liability.
Yeah, that's right. We miss somebody, then it's.
I think so, still I have most of them here.
I think we're up to Michelle Mae, we're running a little behind, but.
I got a lot of.
For joining us. You may come up and tell us what's going on.
Oh, thank you, thank you. Can I stand, is that all right? I've been sitting for a while now. Richard, would you mind sending those that way? Send a few that way. Um, in terms of what's going on with 4H, April and May, April really found us doing a lot of training. We have mandatory livestock training that needs to occur within Butte and Lawrence County statewide, actually. So we've trained over a hundred youth who are interested in showing and participating in livestock at our county fair. And as you can see, we've got a lot of meetings there. May, we kind of, I, I won't say we take the month off from 4H, but we back off from planning major events with 4H. That's pretty historical, because people are finishing up their years. Uh, but we still have plenty of meetings going on and a lot of what is listed there. Um, one of the top things that I continue to share, but I really would like to be heard, is the fact that Lawrence County in particular is the top county in the state of South Dakota participating in teen mental health for state. We have over four hundred youth that are certified out of Spearfish High School. Um, that is planned to continue even after the retirement of Mr. Morford. I've been meeting with both the mayor, I've been meeting with, um, the Board of Education. They are in strong support and pursuit of securing funds, uh, to continue with the curriculum. I am actually in those classrooms this week, is Mental Health Awareness Month, May. And Alicia Limbo and I spoke to a classroom just this morning, of which there was one youth in that class who attempted and survived suicide. And there was another youth in that class whose best friend completed suicide in the fall. Alicia and I spoke because a young lady by the name of Stella completed suicide over two months ago in Spearfish. Um, this is real, this is happening, we hear statistics nationwide, uh, they're not great. And yet, there is help, there is hope, and there is recovery. On my way here, I received yet another message of someone non-local, whose mother has reached out for support because her, her son took her life, his life rather, just yesterday. So, I say this to you not as a fear factor, I say it because your support is so crucial for what we do, not just in Lawrence County, but in the state. Um, I'm actually getting grant funds to send me to a national conference this month. Um, I reached out to SDSU Extension and they agreed to do that, so we can continue the work that we've already started here. So again, I want to thank you for that. Um, that's a huge, huge thing for us to be applauding in Lawrence County. Um, another thing I want to make you aware of within Lawrence County, uh, we have the top extension numbers of youth that we are reaching, and that's statewide. That's a big deal, so the support that you are giving under the program of 4H, we are the fourth largest 4H program in the state of South Dakota. That's a big deal. We can't really supersede Rapid City and Sioux Falls, they have numbers, uh, but we're the fourth largest. I just got reached out to last week by a state staff, um, with those statistics. We're doing very, very well. Um, Richard, you'll be there tonight, I hope, for our meeting, because what we're gonna do is really start taking a look, although we are the fourth largest, statistically, when I look at all the numbers of youth that we can reach in Butte and Lawrence, we're operating at thirty-three percent. That means we're missing a potential seventy percent. My goal isn't necessarily a hundred percent, because there are other wonderful positive youth development programs. However, we could do more, there's always potential for more. So what we're doing is great, you'll see a lot of those things listed, uh, but I'm working with a 4H advisory committee starting this evening. We've got equal representation between Butte as well as Lawrence, 4H and non-4H serving on that committee, to really figure out what else could we be doing. Um, we're really positioned, we have some of, I think, almost a hundred volunteers between Butte and Lawrence, and over three hundred and thirty-three members. So we're sitting really well in terms of taking things further out into our communities. Any questions so far? Okay. Uh, so again, looking at what we're doing, we, uh, are doing consumer decision-making right now and public presentations. I can tell you, in the last two months of my position, I have cried twice. Once was when Stella completed suicide, that was a really tough deal for me, I was very close to that young lady. The second was just last week, when I watched a nine-year-old give a public presentation for the very first time in front of a judge. She spoke on her love for horses, the fact that she's growing up on a generational ranch, her great-grandfather and all that he has left to her with a legacy to live, and that just brought tears to my eyes, because it reminds me of why we do what we do, so many reasons why we do what we do. But I just don't undermine the importance of, uh, public presentations and those youth getting up to talking about what they're passionate about. You'll see, I've got some professional development going on, big time, in the month of May, um, and leading into June as well. I'll be traveling with, I believe, Six Youth to Teen Leadership Conference in Brookings in June. We did get two state awards for Butte-Lawrence. These are pretty big deals, these were awarded to us about a month and a half ago. We have the top number in Butte and Lawrence of our key award, that's the top award that someone can get in our 4H program. We have the top numbers coming out of Butte-Lawrence, so that's a big deal for leadership in youth. And then some of the other leadership programs, such as the teen leadership that I just mentioned, so. It's exciting, I'm excited. And last but not least, as we look there, I believe I've mentioned to this group before, I don't know, between all the snowstorms, forgive me, I don't know, but I will share it again, that I applied for a grant from Farm Credit Services, and we did receive an eight thousand dollar grant to work on the horse arena out at the Butte-Lawrence County Fairgrounds. Um, those funds have been exhausted, and the, the rounds have been, I don't know if you've even seen the pictures, Richard, it's really exciting. But they're doing the return shoot, that's a three-phase grant, so for the next three years, I will be applying for ten thousand dollars to continue the phases of that horse arena. We got a lot of excitement in the community, a lot of excitement, I met with the rodeo club last night, these youth are really excited to see that and help paint and be a part of it. As far as the work goes, you'll see there at the bottom, we are really busy with our PETs, that's our pesticide applicator test, nitrate testing, and a lot of soil inquiries coming on right now, out of our office. Last page there, you'll see some pictures, one is the Day of Excellence, um, again, professional development, that's really important for me to get out and, and build some more skills with that, I was able to do that with West River colleagues. The second picture you'll see is again where we had over a hundred youth in two separate classrooms attend for that youth livestock literacy event. And then the last one, again, um, our Character All-Stars from Lawrence County, this is specific to Spearfish, and they are reaching over three hundred and fifty students in their span of presenting to elementary students. That's just the boys. Are there any questions, comments, concerns?
I was gonna mention to, to the commissioners here about the, uh, need for five thousand dollars a piece for, uh, like farm electricity. Did you go to Butte County?
I have not been to Butte County on that one, I know that Chad McHaven, the Fair Board President, plans to go as well.
Well, you mentioned, we mentioned it here, so.
Yeah.
Calling, I was just gonna do that.
You want me to mention that here?
Yeah.
Alright, well, our Butte-Lawrence County Fairgrounds are historical, they have aged, and they have over two hundred and sixty thousand dollars worth of upgrades that are needed for electrical specific, if I'm correct from the last meeting. And, um, Butte County Commission has offered to put five thousand dollars towards that, in addition to some other funds that they're getting from Butte Electric. And as Richard said, if there might be a consideration from Lawrence County to support that as well. Is that what I'm looking at?
I can get a motion, but I would totally support that.
Well, I told, uh, uh, some of the others that we probably wouldn't do anything until budget, uh, budget time, and that's, we were, we're operating on this year's budget there, uh, without extra money for other things, and that's, that's what I told.
Always very supportive of 4H and keeping that all going.
So will I see a field like waiting until budget time, or think that, uh, say no or yes, no?
Do you have to find your commission and agency fund anymore else?
I, I, I only look for it for budget time, you know, if we get in a habit of taking money out, we got a lot of requests come in. Um, and that'd be a capital improvements request, separate and distinct from their annual funding, so I'd rather see it a bunch of time.
Well, that's coming up quickly, so if you have a formal request for us, that would be great.
I will discuss that with the president, because I do know that Chad McHaven is interested in coming and speaking to our commission, and he can probably give you further details. Um, obviously, I work with the Fair Board, but I oversee extension and 4H, so this is a non-4H task.
And I think if that came from the Fair Board as a recommendation during budget, I would give it, body as a capital improvement.
And what timeframe would that be, so I can relate that to him?
First June, maybe, this is what.
Start, start any time.
Okay, so I work with Bruce to get on the schedule of June.
Yes.
I sent a letter out to the extension board that when their budget is due, so I'll probably have to get over them if you wanted to put that in, that's part of that request.
Would that be the extension or the Fair Board?
You could do it either way. I would recommend sticking with the Fair Board.
Yes.
Um, and I will give you a heads up, I'm not sure how much you've heard, but given what I just told you about Lawrence and Butte being the fourth largest program in the state, they may be asking for more out of a 4H budget. Um, I'm not gonna give any insight into a plan for the next three to five years, there's a lot more we could do. I don't have numbers, I will leave that between you and them, and if you have questions, that's why I'm here.
Okay.
Thanks for the questions, Michelle. We have to decide on things by October first, uh, deadline.
Yeah, thank you enough for your support and your time.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Amber.
Not me, the other. Me this time, I'm like, I didn't do it, you have been, I'm just doing that. So, um, I am here mostly to discuss the fact that Mr. Brady, who has been on our board for I don't know how long, Public Affairs Board, has officially retired. And by statute, we are required to have two attorneys, two commissioners, and a layperson on the board. Um, and the only requirement for the attorneys is that they practice in Lawrence County. So I did, I reached out to a bunch of attorneys, I got three takers, and so if, I, we just need to replace Mr. Mr. Brady at this point, although I don't know how much longer Mr. Johns is gonna be on the board either, but, um, he's still practicing here, so he's still valid. Um, I received commitments from Brad Gordon, who has been a longtime practicing attorney, um, out of Lawrence County, also lives in Lawrence County just outside of Spearfish. Uh, he, his practice is currently, his, his office location, I'll say, is currently in Rapid City, but he does a lot of work here in Lawrence County, receives court appointments as well. Um, no, you're, you're not anymore, it's, no, it's Eric and Brandon now.
Okay.
Uh, you were, but no.
Way back in the day.
Yeah, not any longer. Um, and then, uh, Karen Hunt, who practices here, her office is in Sturgis, but she also does a lot of work here in the county, and, uh, Dave Claggett, who has his office here in Spearfish and lives in the county as well, I believe.
Yeah, he lives up on, not many hours.
Okay. Um, so those were the three takers I had, I, I was actually pleased that I, I had those as options, because they were all very willing to serve.
Does your board have a recommendation on who they?
I, I really, I don't. Um, I, I feel like any of those three would be great options. Um, I would say Mr. Gordon was the most enthusiastic about the opportunity. Um, the other two were certainly willing, um, but Brad, I didn't even finish the statement, and Brad was, I'd be honored to be on it. Um, but I don't know that, that we have any preference whatsoever.
I think, I think about Brad Gordon. Okay? Have a motion to appoint Brad Gordon, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second, further discussion. Brad.
Should we have a recommendation from the board that's receiving the member?
I think that the board would fully endorse Mr. Gordon.
I'm on the board.
I was gonna say, he's on the board.
I have, so there's one, I think they'd all be good. I, I, I'm not sure, I know, I know, it's, it's Dave Claggett, but I don't know that I know.
Karen.
I don't know that I know, but. Yes? Further discussion, sign them, we have a motion and a second to appoint Mr. Gordon to replace Mr. Brady. I'll also favor the motion, will say aye.
Alright.
Opposed? Motion carried.
The only other thing, I, I gave numbers when I, I came in January or February time period, so I don't have any more to update. I will tell you, I have an applicant, it's a very, it's a very promising applicant that we are interviewing. I will tell you, I have an applicant. It's a very, it's a very promising applicant that we are interviewing uh, on Monday. And so I am trying to keep my excitement in check.
Bruce, somebody we know?
Um, it's somebody that you would likely know, but um, somebody who's practiced uh, somewhat up here, but not a lot.
Well, it's real locate.
Already located. And already located, even better. So.
Well, good luck on that.
I'm, I'm crossing fingers and toes.
We don't want to jeopardize it, so we'll leave it at that.
Yes, yes. So hopefully I can come back at the next one and have, have an option. So, thank you.
I have a question. Uh, for Graham, if I may.
Amber.
So the committee that's working on the um, um, Legal Services Task Force.
Yes, I applied, but.
I, I am very, I'm very concerned that there's three counties in the state that have public defender offices.
Yeah.
Two of them were invited to testify.
Yeah.
And have members on there, and we were not.
And I, I asked to be on it, and I didn't, I got a, thank you for your consideration.
And who was that from?
Uh, from, well, I asked to be on it through the board, through the State Bar President, sent out the invite. I didn't know who else to even contact, and she chose somebody else to be on the task force. So I thought we were perfect to be on it, but um.
Did you give any testimony yet?
No, I wasn't even aware that there was testimony going on when they did it.
I'll, I'll send you the information.
That would be great. I did see that they're having uh, meetings. The, the May meeting, I'm actually gone for, but then they're, they're having it in Meade County on May twenty-second, I think. I sent something out to all the local attorneys who get court appointments, hoping that some of them can be there. Uh, Mr. Bryson will be there, and then I will be present for the virtual meeting that they're having uh, for input on that task force as well. Yes, June twelfth. So, yes, I, I'm not very legislative savvy, just in terms of, I don't know who to reach out to on some of those, Randy, but I did. I, I put in my name to the State Bar President within like, two minutes of her sending out the, the email, and then just received a nice, thanks for your interest.
Please, Marshall.
Yes, yes. So um, and I plan to talk to her a little bit at the State Bar as well. So, thank you. And yes, any information you can provide would be wonderful, greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Before we go to public questions, I just want to bring up the uh, letters from, that we've received from the Department of Transportation on the exit one rest area. Does anyone want to, I assume everyone has read them and looked at them? Do you need any additional comment or anything from this board, or should we let it lie?
I did speak to Secretary of Transportation regarding this, about fifteen or twenty minutes into our discussion. Was it emphatic as that could be about the locations?
I was too, when I was in Fairground.
So I think they've heard us, yeah.
All right. I just wanted to make note of it. Uh, anything uh, from the body of the public?
No, I'm good.
Is there a buck your saddle off on anything? Okay.
No, I say most of the legislation here.
Items from commissioners?
Wow. I uh, I'm very concerned on the three-mile ordinance revision and our integration on types of right-of-ways that we acquire and our responsibilities of those. I think we should reach out to uh, the DOT and see what their standards are as far as acquiring fee or non-fee, and when they do it, when they think it's important. Very concerned about that. We're going to have land that in theory we own off of Illinois. I don't know why the section lines type easement does not suffice. And there's instances in, close to town, I get it, but uh, I think it's extortion of the landowners. And uh, it's the example I gave, where now they can't do it, because they're extorted on right-of-way and they can't move a lot line to facilitate a setback issue. I think that's unfair and inappropriate. So, I think we need to maybe develop a policy of ourselves when we acquire what. Uh, we've seen a plat today that that right-of-way has been there for almost forty years, and they want to acquire it now fee. I just, I think that that's overstepping uh, the rights of the city to the suffrage of the individual for giving up land.
Do other counties feel that same way, that business level, county level?
Butte, Butte uh, does not do it fee. Uh, Meade was doing it fee. I just had a project where we didn't do it fee. It's the first one in probably twenty years, because I said, well, you can come spray weeds on that property. And they changed their tune. So I think we need to know what our responsibilities are before we make a decision. East River's different. That's, I just think we need to have a discussion instead of, you know, a policy, when we do what and why.
Well, I know I've uh, it says they can exercise their right up to thirty ma, thirty miles, so it doesn't have to be three miles.
But that, their discretion by statute.
Yeah, we, we don't have a dogfight on that. Yeah, we can have a discussion with them, but statutorily, they have one.
Bruce? You know, it's interesting. I note that I think Marlo, to Randy's point, was very vehement. If you caught, I think I heard her say that this is the city's policy and the city has no intention of doing anything different. So I think she drew a very clear line in the sand today, because I would listen to it in front of the city administrator, the city attorney. And so uh, I know that I'm on the record, and I say that I just pointed that out, and that I don't know how you reconcile, how you reconcile these two divergent points.
Well, constitutionally.
They take it under their, they own it. We have easement and they own the property. We don't have to take anything.
Well, and, and, you know, we just need to make it so the landowners aren't persecuted by our holdup or their holdup. And constitutionally, you can't take without payment. And how they're exempted from that, I don't know.
But apparently, I think I asked them the question, and I haven't done the research, but it actually appeared to pass. And would say that somehow this is, does not follow the, the imminent domain statutes, right? And, and so, yeah, then the question is going to be, there's an easement down there, but then again, if somebody's looking at it, it's along the county road, the difference is going to be, right? That's to your point, is, is that you look to us to maintain it, to be liable for, that kind of thing, right? And so, it's your, your land, come take care of it. Spray weeds.
Well, there you go. Statement that uh, the city might try to do something, but you can't even vote on it.
Yep.
That, that's ridiculous.
Yes, I've been advocating that for three administrations now. It just put, put a member on there. Be perfect if they were on county planning, zoning, and the city, and they lived in the three mile. Cover all your bases.
I don't know. I haven't looked at the statutes on how the statute allows non-city members to be.
I, I talked to Ashley. She's going to check on it. And if the statute needs change, we can look at that. But if it's only in their ordinance, then they can change it when they're making these updates.
It kind of falls under the taxation without representation argument. I looked into that years ago in other contexts. I can't remember.
Probably the school board holding canyon.
That there, that, I think, as I recall, the, the law then, was that a little bit of taxation without representation was okay. And so it's not, I'm paraphrasing. It's not, that's not the way that the legal is saying, but you would think that it would be not allowed, no matter what. Yeah, there are exceptions.
You think the residents of Boston would agree with that?
Hey, any further discussion coming forward this morning?
No, I believe in this election.
You jerk.
Okay.
We are a jerk.
Thank you.
Yeah, there's a couple meetings, a couple meetings coming up.